extending to me the whole for October 10. Attendance at the start of the meeting is six out of seven council jolly did message me and say she would not be able to join us today. So it's just those of us here in chambers or sorry meeting room. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I can do it before he does it. Oh, that the October
your hang go up.
No, the October 10th 2023 agenda be adopted as presented.
Okay, that yes, okay, all right.
Grace already had it on there.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. Ching ching ching. We have no appointments, but I know I'm very sure. And then who would like to do the minutes from August 22nd?
The other one.
There's
the standing idiot. 22nd 2023 be adopted as presented.
Thanks.
Bring one and same two.
Exactly. I'll get your shirts. Oh, top of the boat. So that passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Hey, we're going to turn it over to Brenda. Is she online or she coming in?
She's all online. Hi Brenda.
I am online. Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Morning. Good. Management recommendations. Take it away.
Okay, good morning. Thank you. So this is an audit management report, which is an annual report to give an update on administration's progress on the 2022 audit recommendations from KPMG. During the 2022 audit, there was one recommendation identified from a prior year audit that was considered as still outstanding. This recommendation related to to requiring developers to provide costing information on contributed tangible capital assets. Due to the complexity of this audit recommendation, it has taken several years to complete and implement. Firstly, engineering had to implement a policy requiring developers to provide this costing information. Then this was implemented as a requirement in the city's municipal engineering standards in 2020. After this, a process was developed by engineering to ensure that all costing information was supplied to the city when a project was completed. Then, at the end of 2022, developers had begun submitting costing information. However, it was late in the year, and due to the timing of project completion, more data was required to fully satisfy this implementation of this recommendation. Excuse me. As of September 14th this and this year, engineering has advised that there has been 100% compliance with all developers submitting costing information as projects are being completed for the 2023 season. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
That is short and sweet.
Short and sweet, yes.
Any questions?
Just do it forward. I have one question. Okay, go ahead. Hi Brenda. Are there any items that are outstanding from the from the previous report that still need to be completed? Or is this the last one that wraps it up?
This is the last one that wraps it up. Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And nothing else. Good job.
Great.
I'll do the motion if you want.
No questions. All right, go ahead, Gina.
The audit manager recommendations, the agenda report date October 10th 2023. We receive some information.
Awesome. Call for the vote on that. Thanks, Brenda.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, now we're going on to Fountain Park infrastructure options. We have manager your creation booking and program, Sean Percival. Sean with us?
Yep, hello.
But you're both there. Okay, so Sean, are you presenting? Go ahead.
Yeah, I am. Yeah. I'm just going to share my screen with you folks so you can follow along. Is that, can everybody see that?
We're doing. No, just you. We just see you.
Just me? That's not good. All right, hold on. Yeah. This is better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, thanks a lot for the opportunity to join today to to go through the information that we submitted forward. What we're going to be doing today is we're going to be going through a little bit of background on the information that we've we've had presented back and sent back. We're going to kind of go through some of the investigation and research that we conducted on the various options that we've presented back. We're going to go through a recommendation as well as some alternatives for consideration. So so as most of you know, or all of you know, at this point, during the Fountain Park construction that started in mid 2022, it was determined that it would not be feasible to replace the water slide at Fountain Park, given some of the deficiencies within the the quality of the structure as well as the financial implications of of replacement. So we determined that it would be more feasible and more efficient to install a more inclusive water play feature that while targeting a younger demographic would also have the added benefits of having more inclusivity for individuals in terms of accessing the amenity during our operating times. So for us, we did give consideration to the idea that we had a number of other amenities within Fountain Park as well as across sort of the aquatic ecosystem within the city that targeted a multitude of different age demographics in addition to this new water feature that did target a bit of a younger audience. So right now at Fountain Park Rec Center, we have a number of other amenities available, more specifically in the photo on the right. We have a climbing wall. We have a kind of medium sized water slide as well as a one meter diving board, all kind of contained within the same area of Fountain Park. And over at the Land Recs Water Play Center inside of Service Credit Union Place, we have a we have two large water slides available at this facility. Of course, at Grogera Doorpool, we also have a medium water slide and a one meter board as well. So in giving consideration to other amenities that were investigated, in addition to the ones I'll be sharing with you shortly here, we had to give consideration to a few different requirements in order to determine whether an amenity would be feasible for use at the facility. One was operational viability. So this, we had to make sure that it wouldn't impede to a significant degree our ability to operate our facility. Physical space requirements, so a number of amenities that are available are quite large or they are very complicated in terms of their setup and takedown, including storage space as it relates to the existing footprint inside of Fountain Park, as well as the safety requirements that we would have to take into consideration, such as pool depth and the space between, you know, the the two different walls or other amenities that are available. And of course, we also had to give consideration to structural requirements within the facility. So is there going to be some impediment to the physical structure of the building by installing a certain type of amenity within the facility, something hanging from the ceiling or something that would have to drill into the the pool deck? So all of these considerations were taken into into consideration when we were doing our research on what potential amenities we could we could look at. So so we do have two amenities that we were able to find some viability around related to the Fountain Park Rec Center. The first one is extending the climbing wall. So as you may have noticed in the previous slides, photo of our current climbing wall, we are, we have a climbing wall that was purchased in 2018. This was a climbing wall that was three panels high and two panels wide. This would be something that we would be able to extend the width of the climbing wall, but not the height based on the depth of the pool as well as, again, distance from other amenities. So this is something I'll just flip to the the next slide really quickly. So this is an example. This is not the climbing wall we have. This is a color one at an outdoor facility somewhere. But this is three, this is what three panels wide would look like, as well as that top layer of the transparent sort of panels at the very, very top. So I'm just going to return to the previous slide for a moment here, just to talk quickly about the capital cost being close to approximately $25,000. And of course, we would want to do this in collaboration with our capital projects team, given the recent work that was conducted at Fountain Park. We wouldn't want to avoid any warranty or or cause any further disruption to the facility, which could result in any kind of closures. In terms of our service delivery, uh, this would have minimal impacts apart from the installation of the, um, additional three panels. Uh, we would still be able to operate, uh, the other amenities in the immediate area. We wouldn't have to, uh, close any of the pool to operate a three panel wide climbing wall as well. So the impacts are, as as mentioned, uh, fairly minimum, uh, minimal when it comes to this particular, uh, option. Uh, another option that, uh, could be considered, uh, through a bit more vigorous research is the potential for purchasing an inflatable water play system. Some of you folks may have, um, um, heard this as a whippet, uh, for those that have been around pools for for a while. Um, these are, um, amenities that are installed inside the actual pool basin, and they they do inflate and deflate, so they are not permanent structures that go in. Um, I'll very quickly flip to the next slide, and then I'll return back to the previous one. So this is an example of a whippet, um, that is, uh, not free floating. It is, uh, tied down with weights. So it does stay in the same location, but this is one where kids can climb and then fall off of, which I suppose is quite fun for for that demographic, so. Um, and you can notice, um, that its proximity to, um, the lane ropes over here on the bottom right, as well as the wall, uh, on the top left, you can see, um, running parallel to the, the, um, the play system. Um, this particular one would be able to operate in our leisure pool and in our competition pool if if that was the area we we decided to go with. Um, returning to the previous slide, so there is a capital cost. These inflatable systems can cost quite a lot of money, um, upwards of approximately forty thousand dollars. We would also want to note some of the service impacts that this could cause. Um, in addition to having to find storage within the facility, depending on how big the, um, the play system is, uh, when it's deflated, there would be a pretty significant impact to service delivery. Um, depending on the size of whippet and the location, um, from a safety perspective especially, we would likely have to close that area off from public use. This is not something we would, um, look at putting in on a daily basis. Some of these inflatables can take upwards of two hours to inflate and properly set up, and then about an hour to deflate and and pack up and put away. So we would wanna, if this were the option that, um, council went with, this would be something we'd have to plan in on a monthly reoccurring basis, or potentially maybe for special events or stat holidays. Um, so this would not be a daily thing like the, uh, climbing wall would be. We'd also want to make sure that we do some pretty vigorous, uh, safety assessments. Um, um, we've, um, seen other facilities that have these types of systems, like the Edmonton YMCA's, have to undertake pretty, uh, rigorous safety protocols around how to supervise the amenity effectively and efficiently. How many people should be allowed on? Um, what should the immediate area look like? Should it be empty, et cetera? So there'd be a host of questions that we'd have to ask and then subsequently answer as well, so. So, um, our primary recommendation really is, given the fact that unfortunately, none of us really meet this age demographic requirement ourselves, uh, we would really want to, uh, take advantage of engaging with the city's youth advisory committee to gain a better understanding of what might be a more, um, ideal option or amenity for for those in that older demographic to have at the facility that would attract them to come and actually participate in activities. Um, we understand, um, council's intent in using this committee for feedback. And, um, given that, uh, the significance of this type of decision, we'd want to really make sure that we, um, we received feedback from from those that would be directly, uh, impacted by this. Uh, we'd also want to engage our user groups that use the facility. Um, this can be a very simple engagement, um, that we take on, similar to what we did in years past with Grover Outdoor Pool, with just a simple survey of five questions that can be done on an iPad at the front desk when people, uh, pay their admission or upon exiting the facility as well. We reopened on July thirty first, and we, an administration around wrecking parks, have not received much feedback at all regarding the removal of the water slide at Fountain Park. Um, obviously, the, um, the ideal situation here is that we can meet, um, a multitude of different needs, and this is, uh, one in particular where we we have not really ourselves, um, heard anything or had anything sent in to us. Uh, continuing on, um, beyond the stakeholder engagement recommendation, um, uh, in front of you, you'll have, um, three different alternatives, um, that can be given consideration, um, if if we were to not access the first recommendation of stakeholder engagement. Um, so there is the alternative one, which is the climbing wall addition, uh, which is, again, approximately twenty five thousand dollars through the Capital Reserve to purchase these two climbing wall panels. And alternative two would be, um, forty thousand dollars being funded through the Capital Reserve to purchase an inflatable water play system. And again, that would be contingent on, um, also bringing back, um, the potential service level impacts of having an inflatable system, as well as, um, the safety implications. And then a third alternative, um, is that no further actions taken at this time, so. Um, so, oh, sorry, go ahead, Danielle.
Just one point of clarity, Sean, just to the presentation, that actually the alternative is, is that, uh, standing committee of the whole recommended council, the, um, that the following postponed motion be presented through the twenty twenty four budget process. So just want to be clear on process, that it would be through a postponed motion. Sorry, Sean.
Is that for alternative two?
That's for both alternative one and alternative two, if you would like us to go ahead and do this, because the motion from Counselor Berman ski was that we do this through the twenty twenty four budget process. Um, so this is kind of our in alignment with ledge and finance. This is the best way that we can, um, see that path forward if this is the recommendation you'd like to make today. Sorry, Sean, go ahead and you finish off.
No, that that was it. Uh, literally the last line I have on my notes is thank you for your time, so. I can, um, I I think Danielle's, Danielle is definitely ready to take any questions you folks have.
Love it. Well, let's start up with questions then. Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, thank you, Sean, for your presentation, and Danielle, good to see you this morning. So I don't know who's answering the questions, but I'm happy for an answer from either one of you. Um, when you, in the presentation, it was mentioned that demographic for the the blow up feature, what demographic is? Is that, like, what age group?
Sean, do you want to answer that in terms of the demographic that it that an inflatable feature usually services?
I would say, in my experience and in some of the, um, information we receive from, uh, one of the vendors within Canada that sells these, uh, systems, is that, um, generally speaking, they're they're about as low as ten to twelve years old and 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 higher. Um, many of the, uh, water play systems that you can purchase and install are, they they have a level of difficulty and complexity from a physical demands perspective that, uh, would not necessarily, um, target sort of that, you know, say, of seven to ten year old range. Uh, we also have, uh, facility rules around, um, actively supervising children under the age of eight. So, um, to have them be a part of the, uh, uh, uninflatable water play system would would have its complexities with having to have a caregiver, um, right nearby, um, supervising them, so.
Okay, and, uh, what is the life expectancy of one of those blow up things? Like, could you use it once and it not be usable again kind of thing, or is?
Uh, I would say, Sean, you can add into this for sure. I'd certainly say it's not a single use kind of item. This has definitely got a lifespan to it. So, uh, you know, we would, we have to look at the warranty for them, but I would say the typical lifespan, Sean, maybe you can, you can provide a bit more, um, context to that.
Yeah, it's it's not like a beach ball that has very penetrable, you know, exterior. So I would say, uh, and I could certainly, uh, connect in with our Edmonton YMCA colleagues. They they purchased theirs a little over ten years ago, and my understanding is they're still in operation. Um, we'd we'd work with our, um, we would work with our asset management team within Wreckin Parks, as well as externally, to understand what would be a reasonable sort of lifecycle kind of refurbishment type program for it. Um, I would say, though, these are, these are pretty durable. Um, they're used at beaches, and they're used in open water or ocean fronts across the United States as well. So they they're, they're quite, um, they're quite durable, but I I I don't want to be quoted on that either, so.
And Sean, I think just for context through Council Berman ski, that they are, they're more like to the, the the quality you're gonna see on a, on a big inflatable, like we would put up at a special event, like a large, that that kind of thicker material. Their intention is to last a number of years, not to be a single use product by any means.
Okay, and then there's that area where the stair was for the slide before, that it was mentioned was just used for storage at service places. It filled in with storage of other items already, or?
At Fountain Park, sorry?
Sorry, yeah, that you had, when we did the tour, like, the stairway used to be, uh, there's that sort of cove with nothing in it. And it was mentioned that it would be used for storage.
Sean, do you want to talk about how we're using that space right now?
Yeah, so there were some items that used to be, um, I guess, maybe behind the water slide against the wall that are now, uh, because of the new feature, uh, have been relocated to that space where the staircase used to, um, move into. Um, certainly, that's an area we would look at, uh, for storage of of an inflatable unit, if that was the direction we went. Um, but again, we'd have to, we'd have to look at, you know, what the average size is of the packaging when it's deflated and make sure that we have adequate space. I think, uh, based on the fact that we selected this, included the idea that we we would be able to find some storage at Fountain Park, uh, some space, that is. Um, ideally, it would be in that location, yeah.
Okay, and then the next question is, um, with the climbing wall, like currently, you say it can you, it can handle two users at a time, and the third strip would essentially make it three users. How how much use does that wall currently get, or do you have any data on that?
Sean, go ahead. Yep, I mean, we don't collect data on specific amenities, but Sean can talk about anecdotally what we see.
I I would say that during our public swims and during our rec swims with our our school partners, we we see the wall used pretty often, pretty, pretty consistently throughout, um, our swims. Um, even some of our, um, older swimmers before and after their fitness classes, they like to challenge themselves using the climbing wall. So we we do see it all, we do see it, uh, accessed and utilized pretty often, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Like Sheena, then Wes. Okay, you got questions, Spike?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you mentioned that the the rope is not an option because you don't have the structural components for this now. Um, because I've been here, um, just arrived shortly after dirt. I remember we did have a rope swing for many, many years. Um, and it's the same facility, so what's changed?
Uh, Sean, do you want to answer that? I mean, for for me, I think it's really leads to, um, I can't speak to how it was mounted at the time. And Sean, I'm not sure if you have any background on that in terms of what their, how it was mounted or or secured at that time.
Um, I I will admit, the rope swing was before my time, uh, but when I did start, we had a a structure in place that hung from the ceiling, um, that actually came out, uh, no correlation to my start time, but shortly after I started. Um, the reason that structure was taken out was because it was determined at the time that both the structure itself, um, which was built, I think, by a local resident and installed years and years earlier. So there was no quality assurance around it. Uh, in addition to the idea that at the time, this would have been twenty fifteen, it was determined that it it essentially should not have been installed. It should not have been hanging from the ceiling. I can't get into any more engineering specifics from that. Um, just, that's just based on the information provided to me at the time when I started, so.
And and I think to add that, um, it's just about our our due diligence to ensure the structural integrity of our facilities can accommodate all the things that we needed to, um, to support in terms of infrastructure. So that's why we don't have engineering specialty that that ceiling was was built or was created to to carry weight load or infrastructure like that.
So did we actually talk to, um, a structural engineer to confirm this? Because I mean, like that, I realize that it predates you, but definitely in the eighties, there was a rope swing there, like, for the whole decade, and stayed up till we took it down.
And and I, all I would say is that we, if we wanted to look at something like that, we would need, like we said, we'd need to do an engineering review of of the reinforcement required to see if there is any reinforcement, because I I guess the the caution is, is that just because we did something in the eighties doesn't necessarily mean it would meet the current standards or what our expectations would be from an engineering, um, perspective at this time.
Okay, so we don't, we don't, we don't actually know the rope swing wouldn't work. We're just guessing at this moment, because that platform held a lot more people. So it's a different weight thing between getting me on there and then getting me and Ken and Wes on there at the same time. Like, that's a totally different demand on our roof.
So what I would suggest is that we don't know it can carry that load, but what we would require is is an engineering assessment of it. So that was, we felt, was a little bit beyond the scope of what we were asked to do. That's why we kind of negated it from the opportunities to bring forward today. Um, it is an opportunity that you you we could adventure if we did an engineering review of it, but I would need a a review of of whether it can hold that capacity or not.
Okay, I would love to still see that on the discussion, and then if if that's the top choice by any chance, then we do the review to see if it's not, and if it's not accessible, then we get an option B, I guess, that would be a way, because I mean, a rope swing, if it is accessible, is, rope's the cheapest of all the old options here. So, you know, like, if you got it not on sale, I'm thinking a thousand dollars. So, um, like, that that I'd just be curious to just know if that is actually an option or not. Um, and it also just would help in in the event anything in the future was put forward. I don't know how a resident was able to just install, uh, that platform, but that's a different story. Um.
Different time.
So, yeah, but not that different, Ken. It wasn't back in nineteen ten.
Things have changed since nineteen eighty.
Uh, no, the platform went into nineteen ninety. The the other thing, the inflatable, what size are you looking at for forty thousand dollars? Because I I know that Kelowna, just is, uh, just you know, talking, Kelowna's got like a huge set of these guys, various sizes. It costs a lot of money to go on them, um, in the lake, and they're all making it. They're just fine, um, but they do come in various sizes. So what size are you thinking of for this?
And Sean, do you want to answer to that? I mean, we've looked at a number of different sizes, but Sean, maybe you can give you some perspective on. That was an example of one that we could look at, but there's a number of different configurations, and Sean, you go ahead.
Yeah, so it's, the reason we went up to forty thousand dollars was to give consideration to the fact that we'd have to look at, um, uh, first and foremost, the the size, and they they can range in size from eight thousand dollars to seventy five plus thousand dollars. Of course, the eight thousand dollar one would be a, uh, not necessarily, uh, reflective of what's being asked of us, I think, in 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 this investigation and in this research. However, uh, the inflatable itself, then you have to factor in the, um, the equipment that you need to purchase to weigh it down, and the equipment you need to purchase to inflate it. I mean, this is not something you put your lips on and blow up. This is something where you need actually, um, mechanical equipment to inflate these. Um, so the size that I showed in the photo, uh, would likely be, um, about the biggest we would probably be able to do in the leisure pool, just given the width of the, uh, or the distance between the the ledges of the the pool. So the cove versus the the walls. Um, and potentially with the the le- the lesser of, uh, service impacts, um, of of the impacts that would inevitably, uh, occur with an inflatable. Um, we have had some conversations about whether we could potentially look at using the competition pool for an inflatable, given that it's much wider and longer. However, uh, its depth really prevents us from from being able to access, um, a a a decent number of of the inflatables that are out there, if that answers your question, so.
So I think just to add to to Sean's point, that there's all sorts of variations of size and cost, so we've we've spec it based on a certain size. Um, but we could, um, and we built ourselves a contingency for the weights and the inflatable equipment that goes with it as well.
So the, I guess, I I'm still back to the size. Is it like eight by eight or a ten by ten, or what size are you thinking it would be-ish when you're proposing this?
Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, uh, I would say it's, for for me right now, it's, it's, it's less about the specific dimensions by feet. It's more about what, what distance it would be from the pool walls, um, specifically, and some of the other amenities we have in the leisure pool. So, again, that is the most ideal location for an inflatable because of the depth of the pool. We are limited, uh, however, by, again, the distance between the two walls. So I would think that the inflatable I showed in the photo would, uh, which I I don't have specific dimensions. I could cert- if if that is the, um, the course that that council chose to take, which was to buy the inflatable, we would do a, uh, mu- much more research, I guess, into the, uh, specific measurements in terms of what has to be, where and how far and, uh, from what. So, um, I would say it's probably going to be a single piece unit that has some height that kids will climb up and slide down or fall off of. Um, and I would say, um, it it would be something we would locate in the in the leisure pool. So it wouldn't be a big course type thing like you would see in an open water like you referenced in Kelowna, so.
So how many people do we think we'd actually be able to use it at the same time?
I think until we spec out a certain piece of equipment, we can't speak to how many people at any one point in time. But if you saw that that example that Mr. Percival put up, it did have a number of kids on there at one time. Um, so I think it just depends on the piece that we spec out. So a- as Sean's indicated, we'd look at the size we have, um, the number of play pieces and features and the and the variety of of access points and jump off points and all of those kinds of things.
Okay, I have one more sort of question. So you, you mentioned the YMCA has had one for the past decade. Have we talked to them about just the general feedback about the pros and cons of it?
Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I ha- not for quite a long time. I was actually a part of the team that went in to do the safety inspection when the YMCA's purchased these. Um, they are, they're, they're, they're very well liked. That's indisputable. Uh, what feedback I got from them, it was right around the time I started with St. Albert, um, in just some conversation at a a regional meeting. It it does, it is significantly imp- they have to close their entire pool. They bought a very, very big one. Uh, they have to close their entire pool, which means that the only thing that that people can use at certain times of the day is is just the inflatable, and they were only able to fit about four people at a time on this thing. Um, the, um, so so feedback from the public was that, um, it it's unfortunate that they install it during more high traffic and high volume areas, um, which means that, you know, only about four people are in the pool. Which means that, you know, only about four people are in the pool at a time with everyone else in a lineup waiting for their turn to go on this inflatable. That, and and that it, theirs was a bit more challenging, so it was more of a fourteen plus demographic. Just because of the complexities of the course itself. So again, I would say the largest piece of anecdotal feedback I got from them was just the disruption to the usage of the pool by non-inflatable users, so.
I'm wondering about if they're limited to four, it should probably prevent money, any injuries. Like, let's just say we cho- I don't, I feel like the indication is kind of like lean against the inflatable, but I'm like, let's just say the inflatable was chosen. Would would we actually have the same type of requirements? Because my concern with the inflatable is, let's say it holds. Six people on there, like they all swish on there, and then I'm swimming up and then they land on me. I'm already scared of being landed on right now, and I'm not even in the water. So I'm concerned about injuries and how we would were to prevent that. Now, they're obviously doing a one on each side. Has there been any thought about this?
So Sean, as Sean mentioned, like, part of our considerations would be around how we operate this amenity when we bring it in. So I'm, I mean, Sean, you can talk about lots of the logistics around what our considerations would be and how we would manage this. I I would say there'd be some management required to putting a piece like this in our, in one of our facilities. And Sean, you can speak a little bit more detail what that would look like.
Yeah, so it would be a combination of dif- of of different approaches as it relates to kind of safety as more of an umbrella term. So to your point, Councilor Hughes, we would be. The idea would be that. The immediate area, and let's call immediate to quantify for now ten feet in any direction, would, there would be no swimmers. So very similar to the climbing wall, we have an area, we call it the drop zone. So we don't allow people in that area when people are using the climbing wall now for the very reason you just gave. So we would absolutely engage in terms of usage of the pool. The other safety implication, though, is depending on the inflatable. And if I use past experience, you know, some of these things have areas within the course itself where you can drop down. So if it's a a rung of, you know, different inflatables that kids have to run on, but you can slip down and fall underneath. So the way that you lifeguard these also is a pretty serious safety implication as well. And, you know, how a lifeguard keeps track of who's on it and did they come off on the other side? Or did they slide underneath and do we know where they are? So I don't want the, these, they're not death traps by any stretch, but there certainly needs to be a significant amount of work that gets put into making sure that these things are being well. Supervised and and safely used by the people as well.
So to your point, Counselor Hughes, we would put safety protocols in place to, you know, make sure we had proper sight lines and observation practices to ensure the public safety while in use.
Okay, when this comes back, I'd I'd love to have just more recent feedback from the YMCA, but lessons learned and vote. Any other considerations that if this was to be, it makes me running the play before we action for something like that.
We can do, we can absolutely do a regional scan with that if 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 the recommendation goes forward.
And also, I still would love to know about that rope swing. It's the cheapest thing, even if we do a structural, it's still the cheapest, we could still need. People love rope. Anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, we're on to Wes, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a question, I'm intrigued about your. Feedback process. I mean, the demographic in this room, I'm not sure would be using any kind of rope or any kind of inflatable. But so your use of the. Youth Advisory Committee, and then the motion says bring this forward for the twenty four budget. What are you asking them and and how do you turn it around as quick as you?
If I can, I'll I'll take a stab at that, Sean, and then if you want to add to, please feel free. So in alignment with our recommended motion, would actually have us come back with an out of, out of budget cycle recommendation by Q four, Q two of twenty twenty four. So we would go back to YAC, we would also ask some very high level questions of our of our existing facility users. And we would come back with an off budget request of council with a recommendation by the end of Q two. If council suggests one of the alternatives, then we would not go forward and do any engagement further than what we have done as of today, which is we haven't engaged the public. And then we would, you would make a post-bul motion through the existing budget cycle for twenty twenty four. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but unfortunately, Counselor Jolly's not here. She's the council rep to the. To the, and and I think Gina's the backup, are you? Oh, anyway, I, to the point, I mean, to me, those are the people you need to ask whether they'd use it or not. And then, and then go from there.
So that would be our intention, would be we'd go to the Youth Advisory Committee, we'd get the the feedback, we would ask the facility users, and then we would come back by Q two twenty twenty four. With a recommendation that would include the feedback we've heard from them, saying this is the preferred amenity we suggest you put in.
And and then just to confirm the last sort of statement, you haven't received any requests from the public for additional amenities within the pool area?
Sean, you can add more details, but to what I understand, we have not received any, like, with any fluidity that that we've heard a lot of feedback from people asking for additional amenities. Or with major concerns of the removal of the water slide. And Sean, you can add more into that if you've heard anything else.
Nope, that that sums it up. We're, we're just, and I can't speak to anecdotal conversations from staff. But certainly nothing that's been brought across my desk as as concerning, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Mike.
Um, thank you. I I would just say from taking my grandkids to the pool. Every time we've been there, they absolutely love the climbing wall. Except that they hate lining up for it. And Sean, I think you oversold, undersold how well-used that that climbing wall is. Like I said, any anytime I've been there, it's, it's a major. Major usage on it, so just add that to the conversation. But it seems to me that we're always struggling with operational costs and the the floating solution. I assume there'd be some operational costs of every time we have to put that in the pool, we clear people out. We kind of semi-close it. You know, when we put it in and then semi-close it when we take it out. And 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 then there's a limited number of users, because as Counselor Hughes said, people will be landing on somebody's head. So there's a bunch of operational impacts that I would would love to make sure we have. Clear visibility on before we just say, you know, buy a capital asset. And and then find out that, you know, we need, you know, something simple like another lifeguard to. To really protect our pool users when it's in use. Like, I I really want to make sure we have. A view of kind of unintended consequences of of this kind of a addition to our pool. And. So they, I I don't know if that would be captured in the the first motion of doing that. Survey, I think. Would that information be captured in there?
Um, Counselor, thanks for the question, Counselor Killick. We've had a lot of conversation about operational impacts of of adding some of this infrastructure into the. Into the recreation center. We don't foresee any major operational impacts of adding this infrastructure in. Specifically, the climbing wall would not have more operational impacts for us. If we went to inflatable component, we don't, we would not propose it. To to Mr. Percival's point, we wouldn't propose a piece of infrastructure that would allow us or require us to close off the rest of the pool. So we would still see public access coming into the pool at the same time. There may be some small lifeguarding changes we have to make, but we don't see the cost operationally as being significant to adding this this type of infrastructure. The cost comes from a capital perspective, and then to Mr. Percival's point, future planning for capital replacement. And Sean, please add anything if I've missed anything on that.
No, for the climbing wall, that that sums it up. But to Counselor Click's point, it, when it comes to the inflatable. Waterplay system. We can almost, this would have to come back as part of the research as well. But I can assure you that there would be setup time where we would have to have part of the pool, if not all of it cleared out, depending on the size. We would have operationally, again, Counselor Hughes spoke to this earlier, but we would only have a few people on the amenity per use. And the accessibility to the immediate pool area surrounding the inflatable would be limited, if not completely. Un-unaccessible for for the duration of the operation of the whippet. So beyond that, there would be likely more that would come out in more rigorous, I guess, investigation of that particular amenity. If that's the direction that we are, that we're directed to take, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Back to me again. On the input that you'd be collecting from the youth committee. Or public, I guess, is what you're saying at the amenity as well. Would the questions be, you know, worded at like climbing wall versus, you know, the the blow up thing? Or will will there be more questions of, like, not just picking one or the other? Because sometimes surveys are kind of limited in what you can actually get from them.
Thanks for the question, Counselor Brumansky. We would be pretty specific on the survey to that the options that we've come up with that we feel are feasible for the facility. So we would be working with our public participation experts within the corporation to ensure that the questions we ask are very specific to those two pieces of infrastructure at this time. Just because those are the ones that we consider to be options. So if we want to gather feedback, we would want to gather it specific to those two pieces of equipment.
Okay, and did you do surveys on the amenities prior to the the reconstruction of the pool? Or have you had any surveys on amenities regarding Fountain Park?
Sean, do you remember if we've had surveys on that? Not to my recollection, when we did the design. And as you'll remember, we had to expedite the second phase of work at Fountain Park in alignment with the structural challenges that we had the facility through the construction. So we did not engage the public on that design, but I don't know, Sean, if you remember us having asked a survey in the past on the amenities within the facility.
Not to my knowledge, no. We we didn't have a survey for the climbing wall and the other amenities such as the diving board. And the medium-sized water slide in the leisure pool were were already there, or had been there for quite a while, so.
Hey, the only, only concern that I have is, I mean, what brought this forward was. That, you know, I have had people on social media complaining that slides gone, and I had citizens complain to me personally. So that was, that was the whole reasoning behind this. So if you go to youth and they just have two answers, you know, like either this. Climbing wall or this blow up item, I don't think it's really getting to be. You know, the answer, answers of everything that you need. So is there a possibility that there could be like? You know, this or this, or none of the above kind of thing? Because a lot of times on the surveys, you know, some people don't like either of the choices or any of the choices.
Sure, um, thanks for that question, Counselor Brumansky. I could absolutely see us asking if it's. There's a preferred or if there's pros and cons to either, does this meet your needs? We'd have to work through the language of the questions that we ask. I guess the one thing we want to be cautious of is I don't want to. Principle of public engagement is to ask questions that people can actually influence a decision on, so I don't want to leave, we wouldn't want to leave it as an open-ended, what would you like? Because that could be very broad and give us back responses that we can't accommodate or can't host within our facility. So I think we'd want to be really careful on our questions that we're asking the public to make sure it aligns to what we can offer at the facility. And Sean, add on to that if you want, sit on.
I would maybe just say, Counselor, like to to your point, I think that. That is it necessary is an important question, right? So, because perhaps people don't want anything at all, in which case it gets parked and we don't do any further work on it. But to the point that's been made by the team, obviously, we have to box it in because, you know, we're not going to create magic towers and castles. You know what I mean? The infrastructure won't change fundamentally. But the question of, you know, do you see a need for additional infrastructure, whether the the experts would figure out, is an important one. As opposed to trying to self fulfilling prophecy where pick one of these two things.
And would the youth group be asked the same questions as the public survey, or would they, their questioning be a little bit more in-depth?
I I guess we have to work through the public engagement plan on that, so we would work through that with, again, our public engagement experts to determine the questions we're asking. But I absolutely hear your point of clarifying if people don't want anything is a really important step, too.
Right. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you again.
Just have one more. Go ahead, Mike. Just a final question in in. The suggestion that this is something that, the floating option, something that goes in and out. During the course of of pool usage. What what would be an estimate of how many times it was of the hours that it was available? Like, are we saying we're going to put it in once a week for two hours of public swim? And that would equate to being available for ten percent of the full time? But I assume we're not going to leave it there. And and the reason I'm asking is because if it's a, if it's a ten percent kind of availability, doesn't really help attract. More users to the, to the pool.
Counselor Killick, I think what we, what we had kind of outlined was that it would be more of a monthly offering or something that would be aligned to special events. So it would be something where we'd offer it for a few hours. And Sean, you can talk about what's a reasonable kind of timeframe that we'd look at for an installation. Because again, to the amount of preparation you have to put in to set it up and take it down, I'm sure you want it to be significant enough to draw traffic. But we were looking at it as more of a regular offering, not weekly, but more like a monthly or at special events as well. And Sean, please add to that.
Yeah, I, to to tack on to that for sure. And, you know, Counselor Killick, you're you're hitting on the head as one of the drawbacks from these types of systems is that they they, depending on the size. And the the overall structure, they can, it can really impede. The service of of having, you know, spontaneous drop in usage. Our public swims, seven days a week, where we see the largest number of swims, swim time kind of consecutive. Is on Saturdays and Sundays. We have public swims at Fountain Park from one to eight. That would be the ideal timeframe where we would install something like this, rather than the public swims at Fountain Park that lasts for an hour and a half or two hours before swimming lessons start. Or before swim club gets in. So we would target the weekends, but to your point, we would have to really consider the impact on the usage. Fountain Park just reopened. It's it's been quite busy. I can't quantify that, but I will say anecdotally, just from observation, it's been quite busy. People seem very drawn to the facility, which is great. Introducing a variable like this into the 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 ecosystem of Fountain Park's aquatic usage. Could could disrupt that balance if people are not maybe wanting to come to the pool, because they don't want to wait in line for their kid to go on this whippet. For thirty seconds before falling off kind of thing, and then having to get back in line again. Again, these these systems are quite attractive and quite a draw when it comes to. Their their actual functional use. But again, there's a larger impact that we we would have to really give consideration to. So to Danielle's point, I would say that it would be maybe something we look at from an event, maybe a stat holiday perspective. When we have twelve hours of public swimming, rather than just, you know, five or six or seven, so.
Yeah, thanks for that clarity. I think it's important to understand that the impacts. The the last question is really super simple. What the heck does the acronym stand for?
It's the name of the company that sells.
Oh, it's the name of the company.
I was gonna say I needed a second cup of coffee or something, because it wasn't coming to me, but, uh, thank you.
All right, any more questions? Anyone want to make any motion?
Kelly, did you want to make the motion?
I could put the motion forward to do the research, so let's find it here.
The recommended one.
Recommended. Probably change it to quarter one if I don't.
Q one going to be a problem? Is Q one a problem?
Danielle, could you bring this back in Q one instead of Q two?
I think Q one would be fairly tight. We do have to do engagement and then go, do some additional research and get back to council. It might be, we could aim for early Q two or late Q one, but I think Q one might be really tight. Our preferred is Q two.
We'll leave it as we get there. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Want to read it out?
Yes, that administration engage with the youth advisory committee to conduct a small public survey with aquatic. Facility users on additional options for the Fountain Park pool aquatic area. That will accommodate a larger age range and return to council with engagement feedback and a supplemental aquatic. Amenity recommendation by end Q two twenty twenty four.
I have one question about this, Ken.
About the motion?
So, that the motion doesn't specify those two items, so. You probably know, I think that the rope swing, if it's viable, would be very popular and fairly cheap. Is there still an opportunity? Is there still an opportunity to include that as an option? And if it's, like I said, if it doesn't, is not structurally feasible, then we take it out. Or if it comes forward and then you say it's number one, we need money to do a structural feasibility, do you want to go forward or not? Like, I mean, I guess, can we keep the rope swing in the conversation till we know for sure it's not actually an option?
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, I wasn't sure if somebody else was speaking there. I would say that the only issue is, is that we can't put that forward as an option till we know if it's structurally, um, an opportunity. I would say, um, I appreciate where you're coming from, that this was an option in the eighties. And, and I think a lot of things have changed on the engineering standpoint and as well as from a safety and operational perspective. I'm not sure if those are standard in aquatic facilities any longer. They're a little bit of a different world. So I would say without having that structural kind of engineering assessment, we really can't determine its validity. It would be a requirement to get that done in order for us to consider it is, would be my perspective. But Sean, you've done more of the research. I would look for you to tell me differently.
I think, uh, to, to your point, Danielle, I think we would have to bring in a, and sometime of, some type of assessor to determine whether or not the, um, the quality of, of the, the infrastructure would allow for X, whether it's a rope swing or something else, at what weight, at what functionality. And I think that type of undertaking would require, um, a, a significant amount more work than what's being asked for in the motion in front of us. That would be my only input to that.
Cause when I look at it, I just think, okay, we have to get a structural engineer to come in there and look at it and do a couple of tests or whatever they need to do. Then they come back and say yea or nay. Like, I, I, I don't think it's, and if they said no, then it's off the drawing board. But my challenge is just that we mentioned it, but we really don't know if it's an option or not. So we disqualified it without actually knowing. Is it, does this motion still allow you to do that or are you just not going to do it?
I would say our priority would sit with this motion of, of invest, of taking those two options that we've brought forward in the climbing wall and, and the whippet, the inflatable system, and taking those to the two groups for some engagement to determine their validity. I would say as a second course of option, if you wanted us to consider it, we could do this first piece of work. And we can also ask, as Counsel Bermansky has noted, that maybe there's no further action or people don't want either of them. And if neither of them are, are of interest, we could bring it back as the recommendation saying the public doesn't support either. And then if you wanted to direct us at that time to do some more engineering work, we could do it as a second phase of work if the two options we've put forward don't meet the public need.
So perhaps, I think there's two components to this. One is it could be done, but we would ask for a funding source. Uh, cause we'd have to, if we don't have the internal structural engineering, which we check first.
Yeah.
Um, we need to pay somebody to do the assessments and so we'd need that approval from council to spend the money. And then it might be an implication in terms of timelines, um, because obviously we do that before we start the public engagement. There's no point asking people if you like a rope spring, if we can install a rope swing, right?
Okay. And I don't, I personally, I'm like, I don't have a problem asking for an amendment, um, to have this on the board. But how much money do you think you need? 10,000?
I was thinking 10. That was all was in my head as well. I was just gonna send Don a quick email to see. But I think we would need a structural engineer. Um, I would say probably 10,000. That of an assessment.
Okay.
At least an initial, um, if.
So I would rather just do this amendments if councils want to do it, then that's fine. And if they do, then that's great. But I would, I would like to do an amendment that just says that includes the possibility of a, a rope swing with a structural engineer studied for up to 10,000 from stabilization.
One other consideration, can I just throw it out there? Sorry, and I, I hope I'm not interrupting. Um, is, um, we also have to confirm with engineering that the warranty work that we've done at the facility, that nothing, if we were to make any changes, it wouldn't void that. So we'd have to just check that through the engineering assessment as well.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah. Well, which you need to do. If they say no, then don't do the structural engineering thing. And if they say yes, then go on to the next step. And then if structural engineering says no, then we know it's off the books.
Okay, I, I have an amending motion on the floor.
So what, sorry, it's a process wise, does that, that motion was accepted? So we can't do a friendly right now?
No, I want to do a vote on this because I don't want to interfere with it anyway.
Okay. Um.
And I did not accept the motion yet.
Okay. So in terms of spending money though, standing committee of the whole can't authorize administration to spend up to 10,000 out of stabilizing. Therefore, that would be have to be a recommendation to council.
Okay, so we need to change it through. So the amendment would be to recommend to council and that the funding, $10,000 for stabilization to provide a structural, um, study, rope swing is also feasible as an option. I will wait for you to make it sound somewhat intelligent for me.
If we take a five minute, yeah, let them work the wording.
Go to the bathroom, right back.
Yeah, we go.
All right. I've been told that we're going to vote on the recommended motion that Shelley put forward. I've been told we'll do Shelley's, um, motion that she put forward, which was a recommendation from admin.
Yep.
And then we'll do Counselor Hughes's kind of separate after that. So I will accept your motion, Shelley. Go ahead.
Do you want me to read it again?
You already read it, just opening comments.
Um, I think that, you know, we've come to the point here where we just have to do our due diligence and, um, make sure that we're not, uh, promoting something through council that, um, you know, a specific public will not want or support. So, uh, I think it's important to, um, you know, cross our Ts, dot our Is and see what we come up with after the public engagement. So, and I'm happy to, um, involve the youth committee as well, which is, um, a good idea from, uh, administration. So that's it.
Any other comments? Ken?
I, I'm gonna vote again. I'm voting against it. I haven't, I didn't ask any questions all the way through because I wanted to wait for administration. And with all respect to my council colleagues, I'm sorry, but, um, I think this is non-governance. Ask what type of, uh, lawnmowers our, uh, our administration buys. We don't get into the IT and determine whether or not we want Dell versus HP. We don't ask what type of phones we want, whether we want Rogers or Bell. Um, we don't go to a service place and say Jeepers, we need a new Zamboni. I heard there's a really good deal going on, uh, Zambonis. Or we don't ask for new types of, uh, weight equipment. I just, I'm sorry, my council colleagues. I recognize how important this, uh, facility is to our public. But really, if, uh, administration had brought this forward and said, you know, as part of the budget documents, then I could, I could support it. But I, I just think that we are truly not in a governance role looking for a particular type of equipment or, or a functional piece of equipment. I, I'm sorry, I just don't see it. I know it's popular, but there's so many other things that, uh, we could be looking at as well, but I just don't, I don't see this coming forward. I know we're at committee. This is probably good useful information, but I, I won't, I wouldn't support this at council, so I don't see supporting it at committee. Um, I just figured it's just, um, it just, we're just not in our role here. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah.
I figured that would generate some discussion.
Yeah, you know, um, in 2014, I put forward a motion to save your time, Ken, but they put forward a motion, say, uh, including amenity into growth in the pool. And I, and staff looked into it and that's all we have here is again, including amenity. Staff come forward and said, this is the narrowing down of an amenity. We just want an additional amenity. This is not prescriptive. We're not saying specifically to get one thing and get it from this vendor. It's just saying, you know what? We want an extra amenity. And so I did it in Grover Pool and then finally the, uh, after much, it was recommended that we bring forward another, a slide there, which is extremely popular and appreciated by the public. So sometimes admin and wasn't brought forward for 50 years before that. So the fact that we're saying bring forward amenity is not being prescriptive. It's just simply saying that we want to include this. And considering that a major amenity was taken out, we just want to make sure that it's, that we've at least have considered all the other options and it's very possible that it will come back and say there's nothing recommended. But we're just saying come back and ask the public if they actually want to do this. And if so, what they'd recommend. We're not prescribing something. My second motion actually is prescriptive, Ken, but, uh, I'm willing to listen to, see the public, what they have to say about it. They're the ones who use it, not us, especially amenities. And I, I find it so easy to overlook the needs of use, uh, when it comes to the pool. And, and they just get stuck trying to drown each other as opposed to just do something different. And, um, I, from what I see, I think is probably leaning towards if we did something, a third climbing wall area, if it happens, maybe we'll say it's not worth the cash that time, but I, I don't see this harm in actually asking the public what they think. And it will also give us a bit of feedback of what they think of the overall pool design in the end, because it's easy to self congratulate.
Anyone else want to debate? Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, yeah, I, I kind of struggled with this one as well, but, uh, I do see it as a service for the public. Uh, it, we're, we're not telling them by a John Deere lawnmower versus a Kubota lawnmower, or, or just, it's a service that could be added. Um, if, on the advice of the, the youth committee. Um, it's something that would seem to add another service level to, uh, uh, to the pool. Um, I think the questions we've asked around, uh, the operational costs and, and, uh, how, how much it will be used by the youth, uh, or available. And, and the impacts to the existing usage of the pool of will help when it comes back to council to say, is this something we, we want to pursue or not? But at this stage, we're just getting more information and, uh, a better, we, we've had a great briefing, by the way, I would say, uh, Sean, kudos to you for putting forward our questions and, uh, having the, the, the knowledge to, uh, to kind of fill in some of the blanks for us. But I, I'm gonna look for a detailed report when it comes back and then we can, um, make a, a better informed decision at, at that time.
Anyone else? Um, I'm gonna add just to the governance conversation. If ever there was an example of getting into the weeds, this is it. Having conversations about floating, um, things, ropes, these are not governance issues. Our role is to assess service levels, which you just talked about. This isn't setting service level. Um, approved through council motion. This, and our, our role is also budget. This is beyond the budget of what we've given to rec for the year. So for, for those couple of reasons, um, I, I'm kind of alongside with Counsel Mackay. This is, um, it's leading away from what we should be doing, which is high level governance. The next conversation we're gonna have is the KPIs on our strap plan. Strap plan is where we should be spending our time and attention, not on whether we're having a floating thing or a climbing wall. Um, when Fountain Park was redone, a lot of work was done into the consideration of what amenities would be there. And we got the best bang for our buck for the money that we had. Um, I, I, it scares me how we're always doing these one-off motions to spend more and more money when we are in such a tight pinch. And the final comment I'll, I'll say is one of the biggest risks that this, this corporation has right now is capacity. This is adding to the duties of our rec department that are beyond what is in our strategic plan, beyond what has been planned for in the corporate plan. And we are just adding to the risk of capacity by adding these things on that are beyond governance. So, I mean, I would love to see more things at Fountain Park Pool. If you ask anybody in the city if they would want all of this, they'd all say yes, they want more. Everyone wants more, but it's our role to try to figure out where that money should be spent. And right now our budget for rec is not, this does not include. So that's where I'm sitting. it's our role to try to figure out where that money should be spent. And right now our budget for RAC is not, this does not include. So that's where I'm sitting. Counselor Matt, let's get it close.
Um, when I'm going back to, um, the conversation of, of getting out of the weeds, so to speak, um, this motion is sitting before us because it was passed by council in the first place. So I mean, you know, council brought it forward that they, they weren't quite sure if those, you know, if the people were happy with the amenities and, and the reason I'm supporting a little bit more data from the public is because the data wasn't taken from the public initially. So probably if, if there was a, you know, surveys done at that point in time and I didn't have people saying, well, why was this taken out or why was this changed? This motion wouldn't have ever come before us. So I'm, with this motion, I feel like it's due diligence for the public to at least have that say, and that is our job to allow the public to have say in, in what happens in their government. And, um, uh, again, a lot of these conversations here are not conversations most of council really want to get into sometimes because it's, you know, we're not experts in any of this stuff, right? So, but if it's, um, if it's just a matter of keeping the, the status quo with getting the feedback, making sure we as council aren't getting, uh, complaints from the public and, and assuring them that, um, you know, we do care of their opinion. Um, that's, that's the reason I see that this is a, a small ask. It's, it's just a survey and, um, and hope, you know, I mean, maybe we'll get that there is a shortage of a climbing wall. Maybe we'll get that, you know, everybody's happy. But if everybody's happy, that's great. We've done our due diligence and, um, perhaps we could have done it sooner and perhaps we will next time. That's it.
Call for the vote. Motion passes with Counselor McKay and the mayor in a post. Uh, Counselor Hughes, you have a secondary motion?
Yeah. It's right there. Standing Committee of Hall recommended council administration to structural engineering assessment of the roof at Fountain Park Recreation Center to cost up to 10,000. Refunded from stabilization reserve in order to assess the viability of hanging recreational facilities such as a swing rope or ninja courses in the ceiling of FPRC.
I jumped in before you accept that. I apologize. We just heard back from engineering. We would recommend that 10 be a 50.
50?
50.
55. As a baseline, there's the, the rate is 15 to 75.
Okay.
Um, so we will see if, if we can do it for 15, obviously we will come back to council.
If it's 75, obviously it's out. If it's 15, I'll still do that.
Yeah, big rope.
All right, I'll accept that motion. Go ahead.
Okay.
You got 15 in that?
Yeah. Yeah. So here's the situation. The, when I looked at this, I don't know why this wasn't really considered beforehand. The motion came forward, it wasn't prescriptive. It was come forward and give this to us. And now we have this intermediary where we were now narrowing down the options and then coming back and asking council for even in favor of doing this all together. But this, if, let's just say that this is an option and let's just say that the public chooses this one over the other two. Is either of the three, these, this is the least disruptive in many ways. And, uh, well, certainly it's less disruptive than the inflatable one. And it's an alternative to having the climbing, something different. It's cheaper to actually install this and the other two options. So the final cost, even if we put the 15,000 into this, makes it cheaper. The other thing I look at is just, I don't know why we don't have a structural engineering assessment on that roof. That's just something to, good to know. Curious is whether or not this, where are we at with the structural assessment? That roof, can it actually hold 250 pounds? And that's basically what a swing would be. It would be of 250. You're over 300, you're probably not gonna be using that swing. Um, but certainly you know the, the weight capacity of it. And to know what we actually are capable of doing one way or another. So even in the future, if something needs to come up for some reason, we'd know, we'd know that was even an option that would be viable or not. So this is a good thing to know about, knowing about your structure, what it was. I know that general swing ropes are super popular. I go places, I go on the island, they have very unsafety qualified swing ropes swinging from bridges and trees and everything else. And they are the most popular thing ever. And people are happy to line up and use them. And, um, I just, I, when I look at what, what we have right now is the two options. We have one that's been very, um, not supported in that there's a lot of issues with it, with the inflatables. And then we have one that's just more of the same. So if this one was actually an option, it would actually be something different. It doesn't have the same interferences that the inflatable would. Um, and it actually would be cost is less potentially in the end. I don't see a rope costing $20,000. If we do, we have to look at where we're getting our, our, where we're buying it from. So that's right. That's what I'm just asking councils. We actually give the public a third option. And in so doing, we'd actually have information about this building that would help future councils, if anything ever came about it that needed to have that done. But, um, that's all, that's what I'm saying is let's just, let's just give a, a full, full vocative and for other options with it to the public and see what they wanna do. This is gonna tell me they want it. This is just a bit like a, have that choice. And if we don't do it, then that we're down to the two. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a question in relation to.
I mean, if it goes to what administration raised in relation to, actually, it, would, would this assessment also include an assessment whether or not it would impact the warranty of the work underway? So this is already in, in, in the, okay, thank you.
What else? Okay, call for the vote. That motion fails with Counselor McKay, or sorry, Counselor Killick and Hughes in favor. All right, we are on to KPIs. And I see Daria is here, so that is on page 17 of our agenda package. Are you presenting this, Daria and Victoria?
Victoria, yes. So I have, uh, the Thoreau Petricha with me today, so we will be, uh, presenting together. Not sure if council had an opportunity to meet Victoria or see her in person, but she's one of our strategic business advisors and internally she helps us keep on track and organize as we do this, uh, important work. All right. Thanks for having me. Um, so I will get us started. I'll just ask Victoria to share the PowerPoint.
Need to go on camera first, Jordan?
Um, we have the first part that's more educational and just providing a background. And then I'll stop on the slides where, um, we, you know, if we're on camera.
Yeah, setting the stage.
Yeah.
From a public perspective and then the detailed discussion, I would recommend.
First. Hey, so, um, uh, first we'll provide just a little bit of a background, just as a reminder, because it's been a couple of months since we were here, um, with you. Um, then we'll talk again briefly about the city's performance measurement approach. And then most of the time today, we're hoping to spend on council priorities and draft results that were shared. And then we'll also talk about next steps, uh, and timelines for that. So as you know, uh, City of St. Albert follows a structured approach, uh, to, uh, for our strategic and business planning to ensure that our plans, budget, delivery of services and reporting aligns back to achieving community vision and council strategic plan. Part of that framework is monitoring and reporting, which speaks to having, uh, uh, performance measurement practice in place that will help us, uh, monitor progress, uh, on achieving, um, desired results and using that information to make any necessary adjustments. So today the focus is on council strategic plan and performance measures related to that plan. Um, as you know, uh, when we were working on developing a council strategic plan, we did some work to identify potential indicators. But last year, as we were reviewing the plan, desire from council was to spend a bit more time and really, uh, uh, determine measures that, um, resonate with you. And also, uh, performance measures that can provide a bit of a stability, uh, for the organization and the community as council strategic, uh, plans may change and evolve over the, uh, next number of years and with new council coming in. So, uh, council policy does speak to having, uh, um, strategic ma- measures that focus on priorities and outcomes in council strategic plan. And then also using that information to monitor progress on achieving those desired outcomes. So what is performance measure? I know that you've heard this before, but we like to include the slide because we often get questions about how we define it. So performance measurement is, uh, really a process that helps us assess progress towards achieving our goals. Uh, it provides a, a system of key indicators that, uh, tell us how we're doing and how we're performing. It's a snapshot and, um, in time that integrates important information about the performance. Um, it, it really assists in making informed decisions. If we can visualize the impact that we're making in our performance, then that information gives us a better sense. Do we need to do more or less of something to achieve desired results? And it's really providing that evidence-based, um, decision-making so that we're not, uh, guessing. Um, so we also get questions about the difference between measure indicator and metric. So if they're all the same, it's just how organizations choose to, to use them. One thing that's for sure is that measure is not statistics. So if we're just collecting the statistical information, that's not a measure, especially not measure of the outcome. Um, uh, it's so much more. So the city's practice is very much, uh, focusing on outcomes and results. And foundational piece for the city's performance measurement practice is that focus on outcomes and the priorities and results. Beginning with the end in mind enables us to, people and the organization to better understand intentions and purpose of the work that's undertaken. With respect to performance measurement, uh, from the outcome and result perspective means that valuable information about the overall impact council is wanting to achieve can be examined and monitored, uh, so that we can make necessary adjustments if we're not achieving those results. Um, output measures also help us to validate that we're taking the right actions, uh, to achieve those priorities. And as you can see, you know, like we're kinda focusing on results and outcomes, measures so that we can determine how we're gonna know that we are achieving what we wanna achieve. And then programs and services could be different actions that we take just to deliver services in community, but maybe more off, some of the services or at different service levels. But it can also be initiatives that help us enhance our, uh, delivery of services. It's not always one or the other. It can be combination of different actions that we take to achieve those, uh, expected outcomes. And this approach, uh, sorry, Victoria, I'm just gonna mention one more thing. This approach really complements the current reporting that we do on the corporate business plan. So projects that are, um, initiated to achieve council expected outcomes and results are really outputs. Um, so yes, we will complete those, uh, initiatives and we report on them. But focusing on measures also adds that next level of information that really shows, are we actually achieving expected outcomes by completing those projects? And are we moving the needle in the right direction? And again, it provides for that longer term view because as you know, some of the priorities of this council will most likely continue to be priorities of future councils. So how do we, through measure, identify those longer term measures that we wanna monitor over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? Um, we're also experiencing some external expectations for perform, for, for performance measures. So EMRB has done some work with municipalities, although the focus is more on statistical information and tracking changes uh, in the region. Provincial accountability framework also, uh, especially on the community services side of things, FCSS expects that, uh, we can, um, we provide measures that indicate, uh, us achieving expected outcomes for grants that we receive. GFOA expectation, uh, related to budget that we show, uh, that we use, uh, a good performance measurement practice to make informed decisions, um, and to, not just for our planning, but also for allocating budget dollars to achieve the council's desired outcomes. Um, also a lot of grants eligibility currently is expecting us to show how we're gonna demonstrate that the money that we receive actually made a difference in the community and that, you know, we again move that needle in the right direction. So that's, uh, for, to qualify for, uh, grant, but also reporting back on how money was used, uh, for those grants. And then of course, um, our own flourish, uh, um, uh, doc, uh, plan also indicates that we will have measures that will help us, uh, monitor progress on, um, in the community over the next 10, 15, 20 years. So again, longer term focus. Um, so that's that. Oops, sorry. I'm changing the slide, but stuff happening. Okay. So just a quick slide on city's performance measurement approach. Uh, so we're working towards, uh, having, uh, a more of a structured program. This is one of the practices of the city that we are definitely maturing. It's not as established as, uh, uh, we should have at this stage. Uh, but we're starting with strategic levels. So that's council strategic plan. And then as we progress, we're looking at developing, uh, corporate level of, uh, KPIs, operational and then project. But each of these, uh, different levels require, uh, KPIs. We do have, uh, some of our projects that have more mature, uh, uh, KPIs, but, uh, overall this is one practice that we're hoping to advance and focusing on the strategic first makes sense because it helps us come align other ones to, uh, council strategic plan. So going into the process, uh, my, um, so we are using process methodology called PUMP. And, uh, this methodology is specifically designed to ensure that we're focusing on the outcome and then, and key results, and then everything else aligns to that. So, uh, we're at the step two right now, so mapping measurable results. And if you remember when we were here, uh, last time, we agreed that, uh, we will spend some time with leadership team and executive leadership team to draft results based on our understanding of, uh, council desires from, uh, uh, council strategic plan. And then we will come back to you for your input, uh, before, uh, we proceed. Um, so the next step after that is designing those meaningful measures. So results that you receive in the attachment are a really important foundation. But they are not measures that we will actually end up tracking and reporting on. Um, but again, very important foundational piece to have, uh, councils can agreement and input on those results before we proceed. And then we would come back to council, uh, for step number five, which is, uh, uh, when we get ready for implementing those measures, uh, to, uh, get your input on targets, uh, and then validating definitions for those measures. So at, uh, I'll stop here, see if there are any questions. Uh, if not, this is the moment to, uh, do the motion in motion camera and then we'll discuss results.
Yeah. So we, we wanted to have the in-camera motion so everyone here felt free to talk about anything that might have implications publicly, but we wanted to make sure the, the presentation was very public. So if you have a question that you think is fine for the public, we can do it now or we can go straight in camera. And Counselor Jolly, he's not joining us. Natalie? Um, do you guys wanna go straight into camera? West and McWesel?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
I moved that the standing committee of the whole moving camera pursuant to section 24 1B of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act.
All right, call for the vote. That passes unanimously. So we are in camera. We'll give you one shot a second.
Yeah, I'll change it just like.
And there's no, I, John can say, right?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, just, it was easier to, it was just, I can tell that's. Okay, let's open it up to questions.
And all of the rest of this motion apply that you're going to capture that going forward?
Comments made?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And Marta, this is I need to go to council. Just this committee can endorse.
Yep.
Right.
Final outcomes will.
Perfect. Okay.
Yep.
You.
Are you making the motion, Wes?
I might have.
Mike made it. Okay.
I'm just being fair to come up.
Okay. That the council priority results attached to the agenda report.
Okay.
It is on.
Over.
And when he twenty three entitled city of St. Albert Council twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five strategic and key indicators be endorsed for the development of council strategic plan measures.
Great. Um, any conversation on that?
Uh, I think that as we've had good debate in camera, we've had an opportunity to voice all of our opinions. Um, and hear feedback. The administration has committed to take away all that that feedback and build it into the next steps. This was all helpful in moving the strategic plan forward. Some team members are more excited than others. And but I but I think it's very important that we have the alignment and have the opportunity to candidly discuss these things because this, as was mentioned, um, by one of our our admin staff or that this is a long term view. This is not just a a one year deliverable. This is going to probably guide this council and future councils. So they need to be um long term vision and and robust in that sense. And I think that gives uh kind of the next steps where we'll start to see some key things uh measurable results being identified uh is important. And um then we will have a clear path forward.
All right. Anyone else on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Champion shirts.
Did you get what?
Champion T shirts.
I see one and two.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that passes unanimously. Um, is did we order lunch?
We totally ordered lunch, but um it is late.
Okay, all right.
Just have like two slides left.
Just we jumped to the motion first, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So um I just want to give you just a little bit more information as to what the workshops. Um, when the workshops to develop measures. So we will be building on the existing direction which we have from you today on the results. Um, for each of the results, we will look at what is the evidence of that result occurring? So what would we observe? And then from that, we'll talk about, well, how could we potentially possibly measure that? We will also prioritize those measures in each session by looking at um the feasibility of the measure. Do we have the data already? How easy would it be to get? And also the alignment to the overall result. And then there's there's also portion on there that talks about larger implications. Because sometimes by purposely measuring something, there could be other impacts that we might not kind of be aware of. So we'll talk through what does that big picture look like? So it will be in small groups with each council member assigned to a priority. And I'll bring up what that looks like one more time in a minute. And we will have directors there as well. So administration support will provide whatever information might be needed in those sessions as we go. Then um after the individual workshops, we will bring council together again to show you all of the measures that each group has come up with. And then we'll put a conversation whether we need to prioritize them. Because if you end up with fifty measures, is that feasible? Maybe not. So then you'll have an opportunity to, first of all, for each group to report back as to what was the discussion what challenges you kind of were addressing. And then we'll see, do we want to continue forward? Or do you want to continue with all of the measures on the list? Or do you want to prioritize? Or do you need some further information to make that decision? So that's the measure design workshops. After that is completed, and these are the assignments again. So after that, we have defined what our measures are. We need to develop develop them. When we say develop measures, it's um, we need to understand who owns the data, where does it live, how is the measure calculated, how is it reported? So for each of the measure, we'll have a background sheet that has all of that information to make it operational so that we can actually in a long on a long term basis, make sure that that measure is collected and reported on. There is also the target setting piece. So once we have a good of data collected, have some um data points available, then we can see, well, what is happening? Other comparable measures out there in the industry or in other municipalities set some benchmarking and give you some information so you can set targets. And that, yeah, we're aiming that that would happen in twenty twenty four if you want. So of course, all of this will depend on the timing of the workshops and how fast we can go.
We've already started trying to set those up. It's been, yeah, just waiting for uh council's availability. Natalie?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could go back the slide that has all the assignments. I'm wondering if um you know, this this wouldn't apply to all of these, but if there's any intention of involving, um, for example, the environment environmental advisory committee um in the discussion for for number four or, you know, downtown vibrancy. I mean, we have the um, the BIA that's now in place is is there opportunity to to include those voices in that?
But I would defer to council, I guess, on that. The danger is that we're going to rehash all the yeah. All the context and uh, you know, the one on one level stuff that has to go into that. It could extend the process.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. How we can achieve that with some input from those groups is maybe sharing drafts when we have so with results and potential measures. And just getting kind of some feedback on those before we proceed.
So after council does the work, shared. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Something
maybe prior to the count of the session where we bring council back together, we can share the draft list. Yeah.
So can I just confirm maybe the flow? So first, this is a small group meeting, then council. All right. Thank you.
And again, like if we're not able to have um those smaller group focused discussions, all of them this year, we may use some of the time during strategic planning session to
Get the gavel low.
Get it.
Yeah, well.
Have to be here.
Your schedules are hard to work with, but we're doing our best. But we do have that time scheduled in January. So if needed, we can divide and counsel into groups as per, you know, the assignments that you saw and spend some more time, but we're we're working to.
Does that get like time off?
Can't speak to that. Awesome. Well, thank you very much. If you have any other thoughts, please, uh, you know, let us know through Bill. Uh, but we will definitely take comments that you provided and make sure that we incorporate it where possible. And if not, to bring up some of those points during those uh smaller um design workshops so that so we can have further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lunch.
Hey, do we need another break? Or can we go back and do this land matter and then tell it quits? I don't think this is gonna take very long. Oh, lunch.
Is lunch here now?
Uh, so.
Cause we can start the land.
Last I've heard, I'd recommend if you want to power through, go ahead and maybe lunch has arrived.
Let's power through. I'm with you there.
They'll bring it down as soon as it is.
Okay, so I need a motion to go back on camera, right?
I don't, you guys can say.
Yeah, I'll do it. Go ahead. Which section of F O I P is it?
Oh, twenty four.
One.
So there we go in camera for twenty four one A and twenty five one.
Great. Uh, all those in favor of that motion?
Mike's in favor.
Okay, that's unanimous. So I'll let Sean do his magic.
Thanks, Darian.
In order to be now.
Just breathe. Okay.
Thank you.
Tell us when, Sean.
And that disappeared will be good.
Hey, Mike, you have an IR to read into the record?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Township Road 540, there is a short section of dirt road west from Ray Gibbon to the newly paved section leading into the new Shuro neighborhood. What could be done as an interim step to improve the quality of this short section of dirt road? Would similar treatment like Tom Maker Road be possible? Could it be done this year? This fall, residents are already moving into Shuro. Prior to full improvement of Ray Gibbon intersection, what is the timeline for permanent solution?
Thank you. All right, now, meeting is adjourned at 1:09, I think. It sounds like that.